Good morning, everyone. It is 9:00 AM today on this Tuesday, August the 5th, 2025. I want to welcome all of you to the San Luis County Board of County Commissioners regular meeting. Please rise for your invocation by Commissioner Conchas. Talk about the voice of the agents by Commissioner Guzer.
Lord, today we pray to have eyes to see the best of people, a heart that forgives the worst, a mind that forgives the bad, and a soul that never loses faith. Amen.
But the witness of the God of the United States of America and to be revealed from his sins, one mission under God in the visible of the day and justice.
Thank you, Commissioners. Mr. Don Camp, Commissioner As, here. Commissioner Surratt, here. Commissioner Lopez.
I'm here. I approve the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda, Mr. Don Camp?
No changes, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda for today.
Second motion. Commissioner As?
Yes.
Commissioner Surratt?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes, thank you. Section two, consideration of regular meeting minutes July 15th. I'm going to refuse myself from casting an approval board out because I was not pressed on coming in. Regular meeting minutes of July 15th, 2025. Commissioners, any questions? Here and now, I will entertain a motion.
Move the approved regular meeting minutes of July 15th, 2025. One second.
Commissioner Surratt?
Yes.
Commissioner As?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Upstate. To the special meeting minutes of July 22nd, 2025. Same protocol, Commissioners. Any questions? Here and now, I will entertain a motion.
Move the approved minutes of July 22nd, 2025.
Second motion. Commissioner As?
Yes.
Commissioner Surratt?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes. Reading of correspondence. Commissioner, please give reports. Commissioner Guzer, would you like to go first?
On July 21st, I attended a PPI meeting in Oaxaca. At that time, we approved one loan for the bowling alley there in Oaxaca. We approved it partially. They were requesting $250,000 and we approved $125,000 because they could not meet the threshold of every $20,000 and had to have one employee. So a private company funded, we still have four of them. On the 31st, I attended the Purgatory Watership Partnership as Commissioner Tannen was tied up. At that time, we, the action items that were on there was the National Water Commission Foundation grant application was submitted at that time, and the 2026 COCO CYCA grant application was submitted. And also, I think Mr. Don Camp went within, because we're moving forward with the river design work at the downtown turn of Community River Park, a commercial. At that time, I guess you guys have a ton. And maybe get Cameron involved in it now that she's on as a manager. And at this point, that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Guzer. Commissioner As?
On the 24th, the Colorado Department of Bank and Colorado Counties Incorporated met to do their month in the meeting set up about seven years ago. The first item on the agenda was to recognize Forest, Ag, and Water Commissioner John Stolt for his passing. We really missed him tremendously. Kate Greenberg wasn't able to attend the meeting when she was in roaring Fort Valley dealing with wolf depredations. They've been dealing with that for well over a month. And CPW and CDA personnel are there, and they both stated that what a severe problem it is for those individuals living in that area. The update from USDA is the screw worm is only a couple hundred miles from the southern border, and they ceased all imports from Mexico down there, which was great news, and for the other countries that wanted to use that. I asked if there had been any human cases because the screw worm is a live flesh-eating worm, and none of this time they stated. Farm bill, most concerns were meant through the I reconciliation bill. And I asked, does that mean that we're probably going to go away with the I bill? If all of your concerns are meant by this reconciliation bill? And that could happen. It could happen. Drought on the western slope, the wildfire potential was a huge concern of CDA staff, and they're on the ground there. Robert Cicada, he's a water guru for the Colorado Department of Bank. He's receiving the Water Recognition Award in Leadership Water Education, Diane Hope Torres. So congratulations to Robert Cicada. State policies, we're looking at river access. Legislation to be introduced, right to float, right to wave. We fought this about 15 years ago, and we're successful at holding the onslaught, but it looks like it's coming forward again. The ag land tax status practices, the qualifying, Kloski and Roberts have chickens and hogs, and they want their crops to be added, to be included in the ag land tax incentive because they feel six chickens and two lambs are ag production. A feedlot still qualified, only grazing lands. And the state of Colorado has been sued by Nebraska when the birth was killed. On the 25th, our first TPR meeting, committee meeting, was had. The CDOT planning updates. So the items that we reviewed were the CDOT planning updates, the fiscal year for '27 through '29, and the 10-year and 4-year plans, and order will be going from there. And Senate Bill 260 provided funding. We had $71 million in funding. It was unopposed dollars from the state this year used during '23 and '25, '20, '23 and '25. And those funds were swept to balance the budget. So they're really struggling to make ends meet as far as their obligations to the state. And the South Central TPR only has $512,000 for this fiscal year. So let's not get over a part of the considerables. About $1 million is allowed to pay a bribe. Anyway, the 10-year plan, looking out, there's $20 million for the South Central TPR, and it'll be divided up over four years. And there's priorities. What we were met there for was to see what the priorities would be. And we would like to see a wildlife structure that, like a tunnel up there at Exit 2, to help the animals get under the highway or over the highway, kind of like we're doing at I-70. And we'll be finding out why we didn't get those funds. We told you we're getting them a couple of years ago. Maybe we're having a meeting Thursday to find out why we didn't get those funds. And I have a feeling they're going to say because those funds went to I-70, the historic bridge that they're putting down there. It's one of the largest in the world. I was reminded, I was a little upset that some of the previous 10-year plan had been moved. For instance, like the curve on the Kim, right before you get to Kim, when we wrecked a lot of cattle pods and semis there. And I was a little upset that it had been removed from the 10-year plan, and Exit 14 didn't went in, and it had never been part of the 14, the 10-year plan. And I voiced my concerns there. And one of the TPR individuals told me that the executive committee has the ability to manipulate the list of priorities. And they met last week, and so we'll see what happens. Hopefully, I would like to see the shoulders on 160 and 350 wires that we that live out there know that we need it over with load. We struggle to stay on the road. And when a semi gets off of that pavement, he has the, there's a chance that he can lay that over. But we did this last year. We made one over the rack there by the Red Ranch. I'll move on. On the 25th, I also attended the CCI legislative proposals meeting. This is where legislation is introduced by the CCI members to see what our priorities are going to be moving forwards. And we haven't ranked those. We just turned in that date. Eight, we're dealing with general government. Six, we're dealing with justice and public safety. Six, taxation and finance. Four, a few health services. Five, land use and natural resources and one act on wildlife and rural affairs proposals. So 32 in total. On the 29th of July, the Spanish speaks up. We're coalition, we're three of us, everyone is obeying. Margie Ferndelli and myself were trying to introduce the SPAC out in eastern communities. And what better way to do that than to have an event that would highlight our local heritage? And I asked Margie Ferndelli to attend because she'd been trying to do collecting oral history throughout down here for history of Colorado. And I said, couldn't we do that as an introductory to the SPAC? And she was really amenable to that. She'd been trying to get me to help and do that for about three years. And this finally, it's going to gel together on the 24th of August. We're going to have that initial meeting, and we're already out there contacting those old timers. We've lost a lot of history in the last three months. I think I've attended four funerals. And we need to do a better job collecting that history before it's gone. On the July 30th, I attended the Fire Chiefs Association meeting. And we did have a core. And we talked about CWPP and the mandates in 2020, Community Wildfire Protection Plan Grant. $150,000 was awarded to Los Angeles County. And August 19th, we'll be moving forward with the RFP, and we'll hire a consultant. And let's see here. We, what this committee has done is identified the third meeting. And during the meeting, I was appointed to the Wildfire Urban Interface Committee for the state of Colorado. And my concern was that if they move forward with the state plan, there was a vague plan that would fit every area. I told them that's not going to work. That you can hear on Los Angeles County, we have five districts, five of them, that we know and recognize that you fight fires differently in the mountains, the canyons, and plains. And so what we were thinking about doing, what this group is thinking about doing, is implementing a fire protection plan for three districts in Los Angeles County, which is a good thing. If we hadn't been there, Commissioner Lopez and I testifying on that, we tell them that their plan wasn't going to work in Los Angeles County, I'm afraid that we would have been stuck with that blanket approach. On, well, and we did have burn ordinance clarification. Buddy Colonel was concerned that who has the authority to decide what fuel is used in a burn barrel? And it was clarified in there that he had the authority, being the chief in that area. He had the authority to shut down anything he doesn't believe. If it shoots flames up over four feet above their contained fire pit, then he can shut that down at any time, just so the public knows. And there's consequences for doing that now. If I lose a fuel that doesn't, doesn't fit the criteria and creates a hazard for the surrounding community, you can be fighting for that. On the 31st, I had the pleasure of attending to a recent ARIS retirement party. And what a wealth of knowledge that we're losing there. We've had three or four individuals that have had 30-plus years. And to lose all that knowledge is tough. And we'll be hearing about it all over right here in the room here shortly. On the August 1st, I attended Trinidad State College. Students had refurbished a house on Stonewall Street. And they basically were doing the grand opening for that house. And Commissioner Lopez and I were in attendance and got to see what those kids had done. And with the help of, with the help of some of the DOC young inmates, they were able to finish that project. It'll be listed for $250,000, and they did it. And finally, on Sarafulup, one of my good friends funeral was August 1st. And he was very, he'll be very missed. His name is Jim Altman. And what a great celebration of life it was that day. And we really miss you. And that's my report, sir.
Thank you, Commissioners. Mine will be brief. A lot of the meetings that Commissioner has mentioned, I attended. One of the, as we met with CCI, I want to highlight a couple of them that are very, I think they have, Colorado counties will come out with eight priority one proposed legislative bills. By the time we get done, October 4th, we're going to be voting on these eight that we select. That's going to be tier one. And then tier two is going to have possibly the same amount. In the event that a bill drops from tier one, we'll move one up from tier two. And so by now, the canyons that are proposing some of this legislation, we have, they have already met their centers with their state representatives. And this, this priority proposal is really powerful. One of the, one of the ones, as Commissioner has mentioned, the Colorado Wildfire Resiliency Code. One of the things that we're asking, as we said, is do not treat Los Angeles County as one or a part of the region. If you're going to be building a house in eastern Los Angeles County versus western Los Angeles County, there is two different codes, if you will, depending where you're going to be building. So we don't want to be part of the blanket code. But we have a proposal that came to us from a Delta cap to delay the implementation of the WOON code until 2028. We believe that there is going to be, and let counties continue to work with their building codes, with the land assessment and so on. And from that perspective, I think that is going to gain some, some pretty good traction. Another one that's coming from Douglas County and gained a lot of momentum is to create more penalties for anyone that is doing child trafficking, that is actually stopped doing child trafficking, human trafficking, and that kind of a thing. And so that became, it was a pretty big conversation. And you can, as you can imagine, this, and you know, I had an opportunity to make some comments on that. When it comes to a child, this is not a political affiliated. It is a human person that is being trafficked. I believe, and personally, as one single commissioner extended the support on this particular bill. The other one that could be, that came to us from Pasco County, from Douglas County, would be, no, this is coming from Pasco County. The, in the event that any officer, law enforcement officer, detained someone in Colorado that has a criminal record and that is documented, let him work with the proper federal agencies to go through the process, whatever that is. And so that's going to be, that's coming to us again. So we'll see, as we go through the process, which one of those 32 will make it to the top and which ones will not. The, the opportunity for counties is that even though we don't have legislation, the proverbial about CCI is to bring something that's going to make meaningful change. How is that going to be impacting counties? How is that going to be impacting citizens, those citizens within, within our community? So there is going to be, I'm excited to look at the list that we have. Another one that, that is going to be making an impact. The state of Colorado has a lot of state parks throughout, of course, the entire state. One of the things that we're asking the state is to help with the maintenance of county roads that lead to those state facilities. Because if it wasn't for the park, perhaps the county wouldn't have to spend that much money. And right now, with the deficiencies from all over the place, counties can use some help. Initially, it was only the roads leading to state parks. And so now we're saying any state property should really be in partner with counties. So we'll see what happens. There is a proposition that's coming to us from Park County. And that is to, we've expressed some support for that particular initiative. One of the, one of the points that Commissioner Tony has mentioned, the CDOT, CDOT actually will be doing the implementation of these five-year and 10-year window projects. And I can tell you that the voice from your local regional is going to be heard because we are going to be asking them. One of the things, Senate Bill 21-260, that was actually passed by the governor, this has an opportunity to collect billions of dollars. And I've been asking this, where is the money being spent? How much money has been collected? And all, quite honestly, we're waiting, I'm waiting to get an inventory and an audit of those financial appropriations. So we'll see where we go with that. But definitely, obviously, we don't have the population, but nonetheless, we have 4 million cars that go through I-25 any given year. So that, that's going to be, they're very important. I'm going to give a shout out to the forage group. Laurie, what a great job, what a great forage week we had. Congratulations to you and your personnel on the team of one or two Colorado many, are you? But there was a lot of volunteers, a lot of volunteers. And our county assessor, I think he just found a permanent emcee for those. So nonetheless, please to all the kids, to all the students that participated around that, I mean, what a problem for Los Angeles County. And we continue to now enhance. There was recently a letter that came out from the mayor of Denver. And I'm going to mention that because he actually put out letters saying eat less meat in Los Angeles County. So agriculture is one of those things that is the backbone of our communities. But a huge shout out to all of you. We, as commissioners, are humbled to have the opportunity to participate. And every now and then, simply just however we can, but the, just the work that you all do, Laurie, thank you so much. Let me close with this. The Colorado Department of Public Health, Colorado Department of Human Services, and HICPA had a meeting two weeks ago. And as to forecasting what's going to happen with DHS services statewide, appropriations, line items, and so on. And the question continues to be, what are some of the services that we have that are statutorily mandated? And what are some of the services that are not statutorily mandated? I can go on a little tangent here because we have something from Public Health this morning. Behavioral health. There is a BHA that has been formed at the state level, Behavioral Health Administration. I recently applied, Commissioners, being as your commission, but I recently applied to be part of the board, the statewide board, to push those dollars back to rural and frontier counties. Because I don't think we're getting any. Public Health has gotten to now provide those services, pretty much going on the run and applying for grants. Which, by the way, if we have a behavioral health administration, it should be managed from the state down to counties in partnership and collaboration with all of us. So hopefully, we'll get a little more accountability on that. But the, a lot of the bills that will make it to, to, from CCI to the legislature, once we have the final table, we'll put them on our website so any and all constituents have access to them. And you can actually read the legislation, the post legislation. And one of the beautiful things that we have now with the, with the access of Zoom, anybody can actually testify. On a bill happening, we can do it via Zoom, or you can actually try it to Denver and get an opportunity to meet with some of your Colorado delegations. So that's going to be the update. And boy, we're a little windy today, Commissioner As.
Watch, watch, you're dreading it out. You may.
Okay, so now we're going to go to, see, we like to have fun as well. Elected officials update. We have an assessor in the audience and perhaps our San Luis County sheriff as well.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Thank you for that emcee comment. That was an honor and a pleasure, and we'll see if we can find somebody else to do it next year. But I appreciate everybody thought it was going very well. I think the fair was a success. I also sit on the fair board, and I believe that is something that truly shapes future youth to become better people, responsible people, hardworking people, compassionate people. So I will continue to do that, not forever, but until my term is up.
Eight years.
Eight or years. But I wanted to give you an update. Next week is the Colorado Assessors Association Conference, so I will be attending that. I have received an email a couple of weeks ago from, I believe, you, Commissioner Lopez, about, we had an assessor who was trying to reach out and gain some traction about reclassifying land under solar farms. That county did, currently, the law states that the land under a solar farm must be ag. And in our county, most of our solar farms are on ag-producing property. Once they take it out and put the solar farm on there, I, according to state statute, have to assess the land underneath as agriculture. This particular county, which is Delores County, they have some producers that want that value, or that land to be assessed as commercial or industrial. So we're waiting to see, we're asking for some input back from the actual solar farms themselves and what we consider industry, to come to the table, have a few conversations with us. Because there has been a resolution that will go in front of our association to see if we will take it on as a bill under the next legislation. So I will keep you informed of that. I'm a little curious as to why, and I'm waiting to see what the consensus of my colleagues is. Because ag is such a low accessory. And if we do that to commercial, yes, that's more revenue to those local entities. But I'm not sure where industry stands on this, of changing the definition and changing the law. So I just wanted you to be aware. It is a resolution that will come to our association. If it does get enough traction, it will be a bill that will be passed on through our lobbyists. We will bring it through the Assessors Association.
And then, thank you. The conversation was, how do you define commercial? How many?
It works to our feet.
Correct. So when it came to us, definitely, thank you for taking it to your conference. And as we go through the process, when it goes to the vote, when we, in front of all 64 canyons, we're going to follow the recommendation from the assessors.
And we appreciate that. And my concern was if CCI is going to take it, Colorado Assessors Association, we don't need to have duplicate bills fighting each other. We need to work together to get as much capital gain as we can muster.
And that's going to be the decision. So if you think you should stay with the assessors, absolutely, find the CCI, the unicorn of the Los Angeles County, and see what they.
We, and I will keep you informed the more we go. We will also be bringing a second amendment to do some cleaning. We will also be bringing a second amendment to do some cleaning, uh, from both of the special bills that came out of our previous two special sessions in the past two years. We're trying to get dates because when they created this bill, we had existing dates in statute and in the Colorado constitution that unfortunately, I think somebody who was writing the bill just copied and pasted and we didn't have a lot of eyes and proofreading on it. So what the Assessors Association is, we're asking to increase the threshold for abatements that go to the property tax administrator from 10,000 to 20,000, which would increase, um, decrease the workload on what they have to look at and would be better. We could get that turnaround for getting abatements and refunds back to our taxpayers. We can cut that down. So that is one part of this new resolution that we're asking. We're, um, we're asking to change requirement to mail two notices of determination to each property to just, um, one copy. We all know mailing went up, the cost has gone up. So the law says now we have to mail two NODs. We are asking that it just be one NOD because most taxpayers get two and they think that they are getting a bill and a notice. So we're trying to also help educate them and, and alleviate some of the confusion on their end. All hearings must align with dates, uh, aligned hearings must be concluded by dates from CRS 395, 122, from June 1st to June 8th. Real property from June 5th to June 30th. Well, those dates have been the same for the previous 20 years until the last two special sessions. So we're trying to get those rolled back. Part of it is to allow time for assessors offices to do our job and to look at all of those appeals. For counties with populations greater than 300,000, change the personal property NOV deadline from June 15th to July 15th because those counties are so inundated with appeals that their personal property section, they're just administratively denied and then it goes to the CBOE. So we're trying to help our metro cousins help do their jobs a little better because they are getting swamped. They're seeing a little bit of budget crisis, so they don't have the personnel to handle it. Clarify whether interest, which is 1% a month on property tax refunds, should be considered when calculating the total refund amount for certification reporting. So this has been a sticky subject for a while because they changed the interest rates of what treasurers can and cannot refund back, the dates, when the date starts of refund, where we're going to refund. So in the certification process, what assessors do is we are telling every entity how much revenue they, uh, how much assessed value so they can generate or determine what revenue they need to run their processes and, and provide services. So this 1%, some counties do it, some counties don't. So we're trying to get clarification, lack of law, so we're all doing the same process the same way, which would be a good thing. Um, align all deadlines for both qualified senior primary residents and veteran exemptions with the senior exemption property. Currently, under the new law, veterans have a separate date to report to us and all seniors have a separate date. Before the last two special sessions, they were all on the same date. So now it's made a little bit of confusion and a little bit of lag time. So we're trying to get everything cleaned up. And then locally exempt real property with assessed value less than $50. And the rural counties brought that forward because a lot of them have small agricultural structures out there and some in, your rural cities might have small buildings that we're actually sending out, we're, we're spending more time and money to send them a very small taxable, so it's $50 or less actual or assessed value. It's just exempted off.
Do we have many of those revenues?
Here we don't have that many because we have a $1,000 in-house floor in our tenure system. Because the treasurer's office can also add a $10 processing fee to some of our smaller tax bills. So we get a, they do that on their end, so we just try to keep the system simple. And last but least, we are coming to the end of our intern process and I, our, our program. And I'd like to say thank you for allowing me to, in the budget, to do that again. Our first intern, her last day was last week because she will be going back to high school here in a week. Um, she attends Primero. She had a wonderful time, she learned a lot. And my second intern will, this Friday, be her last day because she will be headed to college here in a week or two. So I, hopefully with something we can do again next year. I believe these young people have learned a lot. We've handed them around the courthouse to do some different tasks for different offices. I can tell you Sean has been amazing and they've done a lot of work helping get the maps scanned and get things digitized. They have learned what it is to see decent people, cranky people, upset taxpayers and, and how adults handle that. But I would like to say thank you for allowing us to, to be a steward of the intern process. And I'd love to do it again next year.
Thank you for bringing the program and, uh, best of, uh, success to you at college. And now that you know how to make sausage, the political sausage.
The political sausage.
Yes, but thank you, thank you, and, uh, success to you, thank you, assessor.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Uh, Sheriff Navarre, you have a capitol?
I'll take the established and, uh...
Thank you, sir. Uh, clerk and reporter, do we have anyone to provide any updates from the clerk and reporter's office?
Not at this time.
Okay, yeah. Frasier, district attorney and coroner. Before I go to the next item, uh, I want to take a moment of, uh, we have a couple individuals in the audience, uh, so we can actually have a conversation rather than working on any other item. Let me ask, uh, Ms. Loriano to come up to the podium and introduce. I think you have, uh, uh, someone you would like to introduce to this group.
Yes. Hello, I'm excited to announce we have hired our ag 4-H lifestyle position and Cindy Wilkinson started yesterday. So this is day two. Um, Cindy was employed by Colorado State University in Office of Extension Engagement as a rural specialist in accessible ed, right? So, uh, she's worked for CSU for the last three years. Yeah, so a total change of position, but, um, we're excited to have her and excited to see the prole that she can bring to the San Francisco County.
Well, thank you, congratulations and welcome, Cindy. Yes, would you like to?
Absolutely. My dear. I was just saying, sorry. Uh, well, anyways, thank you guys so much for having me. Um, you know, as Lori said, I, I worked for three years with extension and, um, it's kind of cool because I grew up in this county and Lori was my extension agent. So, um, being able to give back, I'm just super excited. And, um, yeah, yesterday was a, uh, the first start. We kind of started and then we got to go do some 4-H stuff in Powers County. Um, but anyways, so now we are back in office. So I'm really excited to work with you guys and just to get involved back in community. They really just gave so much to me, so.
Closer to home and you're on call now with mom and dad and put you to work.
Yeah, they're good. Well, I've been living at home the past three years and they've kind of gotten spoiled because I was doing remote and I worked from home most of the time. And so I think it's going to be an adjustment for them and I'm not going to be in the house so often. Um, but it's going to be really good. And so I liked what I was doing and the extension is wonderful. Um, but this is surely right up my alley with 4-H and agriculture, so.
Well, you know, some years ago, we had, uh, uh, representatives throughout the years from CSU. And, uh, thank you for picking up the banner and carrying it on. Uh, 4-H is one of those things that we need to, uh, continue to nurture. And, uh, just a moment, because this is where counties like ours grow America. This is what it is. And so congratulations and welcome. And so from anybody else?
Uh, just like to welcome Cindy. I've known Cindy for years and, uh, my friend, I went to school with her dad. So, yeah, history goes back a long time.
And you, and you have some big shoes to fill, heart tissue.
I'm not even yet.
Yeah, I don't, don't want to talk about that.
Not even yet.
Yeah, I know, it's a brilliant, it's really thankful. And you're right, 4-H is shaking me to who I was and it is so cool that I get to keep ass on the torch. That's the hope, right? That's it.
That is correct, that is correct. Well, thank you once again, congratulations. And thank you, uh, for the fantastic care that you had, Lori.
Well, I also want to thank you guys so much for supporting what we do and helping to support the fair and the 4-H program because we wouldn't be here without you. Thank you for valuable assistance.
Well, thank you. The constituents put the mandate on us and we like to live on it, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys.
All right.
Thanks.
Any public, anybody also public comment? Uh, we'll have anybody online that would like to address, uh, these board county commissioners at this time? Oh, thank you, Commissioner Az. I'm going one step ahead of myself. The, uh, we have a presentation by Ms. DeBolomani. Please, uh, in my, thank you, Commissioner Az.
A visitation?
A presentation.
A presentation.
Yes.
Well.
And thanks for visiting us, absolutely.
I'm, I come to ask if I could be here because I, um, hadn't seen you in a while. And I wanted to, uh, say thank you for all that you do for the Civic Highway Legends. And I, um, I wanted to introduce you to our design firm and tell you what we've been doing for the last few months and will continue to do it for the next nine, I guess, maybe. Um, I, I, I think we're, I think we're good here. Um, again, a heart, really, a lot for the Byway commissioners. Not just what you do here, but, um, of course, Mr. Lopez is a member of the board and I just feel you, you really treat us like family. But, you know, we're not to 4-H, but, uh, but, uh, we bring economic development to everybody. Um, so where we last off last, I was asking for money, probably, for a tap fund, which we received from C-DOT. Um, finally, in January, first part of February, Mr. Dorncam and I and the Blasi from the South Central Congress of Governments and Jim Christensen from the Work and Accounting Commissioners, um, voted, uh, scored and then voted on a design firm that would take us on to the next step. That design firm is THK Design. The, um, vice president and partner is Kevin Shang. Is Kevin in that picture? There's Kevin. Um, our project manager is Anthony Bochent. And is Anthony there? There you go. And then, I don't sound too corny, the woman who needs no introductions, Judy Walden is the consultant on the project. So I'm going to turn it over to Kevin. Lori, unless you have any other questions?
No, thank you, and a great, great to see you here, Deb. And, uh, good to see all three of you. And, uh, you, are you in Minnesota still? Okay, you're muted, but I think you said I am.
Well, good morning, folks. You still good at your degree?
There you go.
That's it. So I've been, I've been twice to the Byway in the last couple of months. So hopefully I'll run into you sometime. I want to, yep. Go ahead, Kevin.
Okay, well, uh, good morning, commissioners. We're excited to have this opportunity to make this presentation and, um, kind of get you up to speed on what our team's been working on. And both Anthony and Judy are going to give the majority of this presentation, but I just wanted to say hi to a couple of commissioners that I know pretty well. And with that, I want to turn it over to Anthony because I think you lead this off, don't you?
Yeah, so, um, really, we just wanted to kind of share with you of where we're at in the process. Uh, we've gone through and done our initial site inventory, um, looking at about 18 locations along the Civic Byway, um, all the way from La Vida down through Cocteau and Trinidad, as well as the Almira Rest Station. So really, we've been exploring the Byway and getting to know the local communities. Um, and after we did our initial inventory, we've been working with C-DOT to, uh, kind of understand the right of ways and, um, access that we can provide for these pull-offs and really pull together, you know, the recreational geology and tourism economy all through this Byway. Um, and so, yeah, now we're just working on next steps for our panels and pulling all the information together. Uh, we've gone through the communities and done our initial engagement and we have a few more plans for later this year. And as of right now, um, we're looking to hopefully have this all pulled together by the beginning of February. Um, so just a kind of brief overview there. And, yeah, I wanted to let Judy kind of talk on the recreation and geology aspects as far as pulling it all together.
Well, I think, uh, thank you. I think the, uh, in the simplest form, we had about 18 panels in the first, um, installation that we did now, almost five years ago. So we're going for this next one to, and, and for that, it went with people, uh, communities who could make 20% local match for this one. Thanks to the commissioners of both counties, the match is taken care of. So now we're looking at the system in terms of another, you know, anywhere from 11 to 16, whatever we can, um, accomplish, um, to be put in between the ones that are already installed and add gateways at both ends.
Judy, may I, real quick, Judy, uh, on one of the conversations in our dead that we have had is, uh, on the north entrance of the Aguilar community, there is the wayfinding, so for individuals that are traveling southbound, they can get off on that particular entrance, go through the town of Aguilar, uh, and find their way through the Civic Highway Legends. Is that, I mean, there is, uh, I traveled that once and, and because I have county maps without any, without, if you're, if you don't have the proper wayfinding, the physical map, GPS doesn't work as well in some of those canyons. So let's keep that in mind as a process goal because, uh, if you get someone coming in there from out of state and they see this signage and they go through those canyons, they may end up, uh, going in circles for a little bit. I just want to make sure that that is going to be addressed, Judy.
Yeah, thank you for that. You know, when we went into the national designation for the, for National Civic Byway, we eliminated that road because it didn't meet standards. And now we're looking at mapping for everything and think that the most, one of, one most important thing we can do is to tell people what the condition of that road is and that basically they need at least a four wheeler, a ride vehicle to make it work. So we are very aware of it and for safety reasons, we're very concerned about that, too.
Okay.
Okay, so basically, when we're, when we're going out with the system together, we're going to shift this from a series of informational kiosks to a travel system where people feel from the beginning to the end, right, that they're on a system and you are here on each of the maps, the map, the maps will match. We're looking to build under these, um, first of all, a direction so you know well, there's more, more of what to do coming ahead. Specifically, know where to go, not the great, the great, the height scrape, right, out of this region, but where can you bike, right? Where can you bike? And get people to speci, specifics so we hold them long enough that we have the possibility of economic gain. So that's what we're working on. So the two big, the new kinds of information that we have not put in at first time is the geology. Um, we have some wonderful consultants, um, Lon, Abbott and Terry Cook, um, who have written their guidebook on, um, geology on Front Range. And they, we've already gotten their first, um, their first installment. And we're basically connecting geology, not just through the Byway, but per place. So Stone will have, will have its place, Cocteau has its place. Look around and here's what the geology is here and what you, here's what you can do on it. So that's the first. Second is, the biggest news, you know, nationally and in terms of state as well, in terms of what's happening in tourism is outdoor recreation. And here we have all this wonderful new outdoor recreation going on in the county. And we're looking... and we're looking at how to take advantage of that and really not just talk about the outdoors and what they could do, but to say, here's what you can do here, here's what you can paddleboard, here's what you can fish, here's what you can, right? And bring the traditional recreation that, you know, exists here and that other parts of the state don't really have anymore, the kind of camping you have, the kind of traditional cabins, that's really a strength in terms of what you have. And then also in terms of people who are traveling and want recreation, to get that connection made. So our first two pushes are geology, right, outdoor recreation, and then the third is what I'm calling, I'm calling other voices. So looking at the system of what we have now, whose voices are present, who are we telling stories about, and who are voices we still need to move forward? And that's about it. So questions or anybody want to add something?
I've got a question. When you're talking about geology, just out of curiosity, is the KT boundary going to be identified with a sign, what kind of directions out of the seed, modern day, that's clear?
Not only will it be identified, but our geologists say that of all the geology features, this is internationally important. This is the top in terms of its significance. So one of the things we're working on with the State Department is to say, wow, this location is so significant. You know, the Smithsonian sends a truck and they've got a piece of it in Smithsonian, right, the KT Boundary. So really bring this forward, and this is going to take a big partnership with the State Department, but we will be, yes.
And thank you for asking that question, Mr. Dornkamp. But we have, even on a tangent, the KT Boundary, we would like to see if we can connect with Colorado School of Mines through the geology department. So if anybody wants to follow up the historical, just foundational story of that KT Boundary, I mean, there are two places here in San Luis County, but this is right off of a highway twelfth. So we've spoken about that and we're really passionate about perhaps in the future, having a grant to connect with an educational institution to have more, more exposure to it and more education as people go through the place.
Great.
Commissioners?
Any other questions?
No, thank you, thank you, Deb and Judy, thank you for the update, and to all of you. Great to see you both, and we look forward to having the plan completed, and it is an honor to be part of the board, so thank you. Thank you, Judy, thank you all, happy day.
Thank you very much. Do you want to work the topic again?
Very good. And now, moving on to the next public comment, anyone online that would like to take this opportunity to address this board, simply admit yourself, raise your hand, and you will have a few minutes. Here and now, we're going to go to section, we don't have anything on section seven, section eight, unfinished business. Was this table, Mr. Dornkamp?
It was, it was.
It was? Thank you. So consideration of South Central Council of Governments Dollar Housing Grant Letter of Support and Cash Match, I will entertain a motion to remove this from the table.
So good. Thank you. Commissioner Searle?
Yes.
Press your hands?
Yes.
Commissioner Searle?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Dornkamp. I know you and I have had a couple of conversations on days, and you also have had the opportunity to follow up with Mr. Blasi from South Central Council of Governments. Would you provide us an update please?
Commissioner, for your consideration, as a support letter for COG being a regional entity that will seek a grant to enable assist in assessing how housing needs assessment, I guess is how it is described.
Housing needs assessment?
In Los Angeles and local counties. And then once that's determined, then the second part of this funding opportunity, which would require another grant submission for, oh, I don't recall, I don't see the housing needs assessment, and also how to implement programs to address those needs, if I am at a loss for the acronym, but I don't know how that's described. But anyway, the question I had, and the state did answer that for us, is if a part of the region, the house, housing needs assessment, then are we, since we'd be using state funds and using state grant funds, I thought it would perhaps require us to also pursue that next step of grants and, and the county to come up with a match for that. But the state answered, I can say, no, since we did have at least a 1% population drop between census, that would exclude us, even though we'd be using grant monies and via the state grant conditions, use those grant monies and you're obligated to do the needs assessment and the next step also, the census, that 1% loss and we would be obligated to do that next step. So anyway, it gets up to the board, is whether they want to submit a letter of support or the cash match, cash contribution, which I think is $5,143.75.
The needs, housing needs assessment is also water needs assessment, that division is going to happen. I think in my understanding, that's going to be both.
I think that's going to be part of it. Commissioner, I'm really not sure what this housing needs assessment will entail, and be a part of that conversation.
Thank you for the update, Commissioners.
The second, the second step will be the housing action plan, the final, the term that we use. So we have the housing needs assessment and the housing action, those two different potential matches that the county will potentially incur. Housing needs assessment first, unless determined, then the housing plan, housing action.
Well, two things. One is if we decided to help the region with this assessment, first of all, where would the funds come from? Can I say to our finance director, or you, Mr. Dornkamp?
Well, we can probably take it with, border county Commissioners have dues and means, it's a little extra in there. We have a little extra in our insurance fund to where we can offset if we do, or get to border county Commissioners. So that's something we can probably take it from this, and watch it to begin.
Very good.
And use this as the rest of the budget.
Thank you.
And Mr. Dornkamp, we're exempt, correct, right now, because we, the census showed that we lost population?
That's correct, Commissioner, and I don't have the, the house bill or state bill in front of me, but it's required that if you had a population gain and you were a certain threshold, you were 5,000 within your, in our case, the county or municipality, then you had to do this housing needs assessment, but we lost population between 2010 and 2020, we are exempt from that. So we do not have to do the housing needs assessment or the housing, actually, we don't have, pardon my wording, and I, you know, me being the cynical person I am, the city turned out to leave a housing needs assessment in 2022, and as we leave the city of Walsingham or Fort Worth County, I believe in 2023, so the data is out there. But maybe it's, I don't know, being cynical, I can't see why we'd need a housing needs assessment, we've had a population loss. But again, maybe it gives us some data that would be useful.
And the bill that you were referencing, the 24074, and if we don't participate now with the $5,900, then if we should see a population increase and we want to get in later, then my understanding is that it would be closer to $75,000.
Commissioner, you're correct. If we do see a static population loss or gain, or a gain within the next census, which will be conducted in 2030, then at that time, according to the statute that you just referenced, we'd be required to do the housing needs assessment. And I'm not so sure that we're not required to do that anyway, every, was it six years? I think, I'm trying to remember. So.
I guess I had, originally when I saw this, my first thinking is, for example, might spend a month, but the way I understand it, this is going to cover a water assessment too?
Commissioner, I'm not sure, I can't speak to that.
That was the initial understanding. I don't see that stated on the information that we have here.
I don't want to get caught down the road where we're looking at, you know, if we do have to get one estimate, we're going to have to pay $75,000 to get it done. I mean, $5,900, you know, $1,000 still, I mean, with the budget, the way we are, it's still a lot of money at this point.
I think, you know, let me, from the perspective, and I really appreciate the finance director over these endpoints, the, if this is not going to be required with the San Luis County until 2030, at that time, we're looking at five more years before we do anything. And in the event, with the exemption that we currently have, we could proceed to do any government of housing information, because we need that exemption. And in 2030, when this comes due, well, that would be a whole different perspective if we have to do it. I'd like to extend the Council of Governments, of course, a letter of support. I'm not certain that I think we, I'm financially, I don't know if they would be willing to perhaps take a third as contribution on behalf, or if that's even necessary for us to make a mandatory contribution, it just simply should be a letter of support.
That would be obviously a decision at the board, you do the letter of support, any kind of financial contribution, seem appropriate, and that would help, I believe, with pursuing a grant to do the housing needs assessment. But I don't want to speak with the Congress.
No, and again, you know, for the perspective that we have, right now, we have so many financial couldbe's on the air, we have so many uncertainties, we don't know what's going to happen here in the next few months with appropriation, but even $5,000 to me makes a huge difference. We have to be physically through it. And if Los Angeles County, on behalf of the constituents, this is what we got elected to do, I'm actually going to be, my idea personally would be is to extend a letter of support with no financial contribution. Commissioners?
I would make that motion to submit a financial letter of support without any financial support for this.
Senator Wolf?
Commissioner Searle?
Yes.
Commissioner Searle?
Yes. Yes, thank you. We're going to go now to new business. Consideration of appointment to the San Luis Waterfront County District Health Department Board, Mr. Dornkamp, and we also have, Commissioner Searle, please proceed.
Before you, Commissioners, consideration of appointment to Los Angeles Waterfront County District Health Board, this is a position of the board, Los Angeles County feels, and we had Robert Wilber as express an interest in having that vacancy.
Thank you, Mr. Dornkamp. Commissioner Searle, could you please, a couple of questions for you here? Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning. Great to see you. Is this, who, I mean, I know obviously it's a vacancy, but does that maintain full work appointment?
Yes, so Mr. Rowe did finish out the term for Shirley Dominique, whom we lost a few years back. And so he is interested in reappointment, and this will be the five-year full term for him to be appointed to the Board of Health. He's been a great Board of Health member, he brings a lot of experience, he's got medical background, which is key to the public health experience.
And you also have an agent from this board, County Commissioners, that you, Mr. Searle?
Yes.
Okay, and with the ultimate commission, who has?
And we have Mr. Haas on board and as a Commissioner representative, and we also have Mr. Chamberlain as a Waterfront County Representative for the Board of Health.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. Any questions for either Mr. Dornkamp or any Commissioner Searle? Well, thank you for being here. Thank you. I don't see any other questions, then at this moment, I will entertain a motion.
I would move to appoint Ronald Rowe as a Los Angeles Waterfront County District Health Department Board Member.
Commissioner Searle?
Yes.
Press your hands?
Yes.
Commissioner Searle?
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. Congrats. You too. Now, in the consideration of 25-002 livestock facility electrical upgrade, change order number one, Mr. Dornkamp?
Commissioners, before you, for your consideration, is 25-002, change order number one. This will include three additional north of south receptacles to be installed, and this, actually, for this one, is already been installed on livestock pavilion. And in addition to that, we need three LED wall pack lights with five receptacles on the west side of the pavilion, 10 LED lights underneath the south overhang, south stall overhanging there on those stalls that are west of the livestock pavilion, with a total change order of $8,594.54. There was, there was some concern raised in the Waterfront Council on this, as the work that was completed within $21,405. So that work was actually adhered to our RFQ that we sent out and had various electrical companies submit their replies to that. So once we make that determination, then we'll take up the issue of 21405. And I bring this in front of the board because there was two donations being launched by San Luis Obelisco for $15,000 and one for Co-Bank, another $15,000, for a total of $30,000 for this project. And so therefore, the reasoning for bringing this change order together and asking not only the Fair Board, but maintenance of what they like to see funds spent on, and that's what's being filmed right now.
So two questions, Mr. Dornkamp. One, of course, that you have $30,000, and then we also have, we would have some lottery funds, if need be, to enhance and/or complete the project, so we can meet all of the requirements from the Fair Board, and thank you for working with them, I think that's paramount to what we do here. Second, the, you will be doing a walkthrough with the contractor to make sure that the RFQ that was submitted to you is exactly, was completed according to what we agreed upon?
That's where, that's where the rub is. My interpretation, obviously, because I wrote the RFQ, is that this is this mission, especially the analysis of what we had there, and the analysis, they were supposed to contact different entities to talk to those entities, see what the need was. I based my RFQ on the fact that the need wasn't being met. I think they were to analyze it, come up with a plan to take care of that need. Their interpretation, contractors' interpretation is different. Their interpretation is that what I requested in the RFQ, they fulfilled. So that's why we are working with council to get a determination as to whether my RFQ I wrote is sufficient and not, then the blame is right here on the issue.
I will definitely, we'll get into the council, you sir, but thank you, right. Commissioners?
Yeah, I, I don't know how to put this delicately, but it was a total cluster out there during the fair.
Had to have an individual man switch for it, so that when the breaker would click, they could click it right back on. This is what we were trying to avoid. And I hope we get to the bottom of this, because that was some hard work, in my opinion. And I'll leave it on the floor.
I agree with Mr. Haas on these, because we thought the problem was resolved, and basically, we were having the same issues after the twenty-one thousand dollars put in as we were the last ten, fifteen years. My question to council is, do we move forward with this change order?
I can advise you to execute your session.
Yeah, so from that perspective, commissioners, we have, I'm going to make a recommendation to lay this item on the table, and to move it down to executive session.
Second. Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
Commissioner Haskins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes. Thank you, commissioners, and the next item, consideration of OBCC seven zero three four to Michael Dixon for one hundred and twenty-four dollars and sixty-two cents. If you have any questions, we have, the San Francisco Treasurer, Senator Stevens.
Good morning, welcome, great to see you. Nice to see you all. Any questions regarding this OBCC?
The, no. Pretty self-explanatory. Commissioners?
Oh, one question.
Okay, no questions, please, we have another one coming up as well.
Yes.
The, then the next motion would be to approve this nine C item.
I will move to approve the OBCC seven zero three four to Michael Dixon for one hundred and twenty-four dollars and sixty-two cents. Second motion.
Commissioner Haskins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes. Thank you. Nine D, consideration of OBCC seven zero three five to Trinidad and Lewis District for one thousand five hundred eighty dollars and seventy-seven cents. And we have information here, but
On this particular OBCC, they're not receiving, they're not going to be receiving any payment. We're just, we're asking to write that off. When they purchase the building, they can order compliance and play everything that was owed at that time. And then by the time they file their acceptance status, this was the remaining that should have been a tactical correction. And it's just been sitting there, and here, you know, we said in July, the liquids, this is the only time they get this, so it's just to clear it off the works.
Great. Thank you, thank you for that, I would welcome to you the decision.
Thank you very much.
Commissioners, any questions for Treasurer Martins? Herein that, I will entertain a motion.
Now, we're going to clear this off the table.
Yes, we cleared it off the books. Yes, so, because they are, and it's just been sitting there since they purchased it. And it's not, they were paying at that time that they purchased it. It's just they didn't get the tactical correction, and it just sits there and just accumulates, and so it's going to be cleared by them.
Moved up from OBCC seven zero three five to Trinidad and Lewis District for fifteen eighty-one, seventy-seven. This will clear the books.
Yes.
Second.
Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
Commissioner Haskins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
We have one ninety between us, so if you have to see, we have another one.
Sure.
Thank you. Nine E, consideration of legal license for no application for pavement adventures LLC, doing business as and speaks barring real. Counsel?
Commissioners, I review the application as shown.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate that. Commissioners, any questions? And we also have someone from the clerk who reports, if there's any additional questions on this particular application. Herein that, I will entertain a motion.
I will move to approve the legal license for no application for pavement adventures LLC, doing business as Spanish speaks barring no.
Second motion. Commissioner Haskins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes, thank you. Consideration, nine F, consideration of OBCC seven zero three six to the Colorado Department Labor and Employment for eighteen dollars.
That is us.
That's you, here, well, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, this was an E reporting that came through our office, and unfortunately, the deputy clerk accepted it and was for the Colorado Department Labor. So there should have been no charge. And we charged it, we tried to do a void on our end, and have them pull the package, and unfortunately, it didn't work, so now they're asking for their eighteen dollars.
Sure. Even times of need, the old ghost is bringing it.
Right.
Any questions, commissioners? Herein that, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve OBCC seven zero three six to Colorado Department Labor and Employment for eighteen dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Nine G, consideration of two thousand twenty-five updated handbook.
Commissioner, read.
Oh, yes. Motion?
Second. Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
Commissioner Haskins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Consideration of two thousand twenty-five updated handbook, Mr. Garokan.
Commissioner, before you, for your consideration, is the updated twenty-two-five updated handbook. May thank you to Attorney Nelson and to the DHS Director Michael Erveland, who do a lot of work in this update. And so has the Board to approve it.
Counsel, and thank you, I went through the, as you mentioned, this thing, and one of the bigger changes that I see, of course, have to do with the podium reimbursements and so on, and that was one of the ones that was approved a while back, and is now part of the packet. Looking for any, any questions for council commissioners, or Mr. Garokan, Mr. Garokan that is here? Thank you for all the work that you opened this. Okay, no questions, I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve twenty-one updated handbook.
Second motion. Commissioner Haskins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Nine E, consideration of Perry Stokes Airport application fiscal year twenty-five airport maintenance maintenance, Mr. Garokan.
Before you, for consideration, commissioners, is the Perry Stokes Airport grant application for fiscal year twenty-two-five. This will be the application for our maintenance, which is basically a seal code out there on the runway. Hangars, taxiways, et cetera. So I have some work to prove, and if we get this, we'll get this submitted to the FDA, and then hopefully, they'll give it a turnaround, and get a contract in front of me, introduced to me. In total, that's been four hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. And so, there is. Any questions, we will take that away, commissioners? No. I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve the Perry Stokes Airport grant application for year twenty-two-five airport maintenance.
Second. Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
Commissioner Haskins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Nine, I consideration of underfunded elevator grant extension. I underfunded. I, I hope it's fully funded, right?
I hope so. I'm not sure if the state swept that, either, I don't know. I retract those words. Before you, for your consideration, commissioners, is an extension to our underfunded elevator grant. With any luck, it looks like they may be starting on that tomorrow, that being the only, and this has been ongoing since after the elections, so hopefully, we'll get it closed. Finance Director Kobe brought it to my attention that the grant, I believe, was set to expire, Chris Hughes correctly, on the end of September.
September three.
And so she asked for an extension, request at.
And have been granted.
I just made it your signature, because the judges' decisions are yet approved for this extension, and then once they get the signature, I will upload it, and then I'll wait for approval.
Do I have that in the calendar?
Um.
No.
No, it's on the chart.
Okay, that was.
But I'll have it on the table.
Okay.
This one, and that's right here, because it has judge decisions on here, and you just need to sign random questions. And then I'll upload this to show that both parties have actually approved this request.
Yeah, and the hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars for sixty-nine, pretty much, that's covered through the underfunded grant.
And this, this grant is, is the one that's four hundred ninety-eight, but half of it is the judge's bench, and then there's half for the elevator, or not even half, but there's, there's two different projects we can miss before we can finish that, is the elevator. So I think the judge's bench is complete. When it's ready for the elevator.
And counsel, you have had a opportunity to review, I saw it in the paper here, you had actually read the the additional language.
I think you're looking at item J.
Oh. Okay, yes, 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 thank you, thank you. What, just trying to keep everybody aware.
I guess I have one question, if they start the elevator job tomorrow, when's the last time, is it called, tomorrow being last time?
Commissioner, I can't answer that, I do not know when they are going to actually take it out of service. What I read via email was that tomorrow will be mostly staging equipment, getting stuff. They're going to be bringing in two storage units, conexas, should contain some, yes, it is a department, they're going to be unloaded out here in the courtyard, because they want to be as close to the owner as possible. What I read via the emails, tomorrow will be mostly unloading and loading, loading off trucks, loading into storage containers, and is setting up, so I'm going to guess it's probably going to be, yes, probably Thursday or Friday, if they're taking.
How will, how will we be able to find that number?
Signage will be put out, or out of service, and also, maybe we can put it on our Facebook account, and
And will we, will we make accommodations for them downstairs, or if they still need the elevator?
We will make accommodations, we're making accommodations for some of the staff that uses the elevator, especially on third floor. Finance Director Kobe and Administrator Assistant Paul McCertland both offered different areas within our first floor admin offices to accommodate staff. And the third floor is aware of it, and they're trying to rearrange their dockets such that either they hold virtually courts, or they find a different location to hold these dockets, so cases.
What is the estimated time of completion?
They have not given us the estimated time of completion, I should say, I would guess two months, in the past.
Two months, I guess. Yeah, that's, so we don't think that year has, will be, but I want you to confirm, if you think everyone informed that for the clerks and the treasurer and the assessor, at any time, there is a need, is to provide service on the first floor. And please have communication with finance director properly, and Mr. Lucero, and then whatever we need, let's work through this together.
I think, I think staff is pretty much set aside the first floor conference room for elected staff to be, but staff that works on third floor that needs accommodations, the process who work with finance director and administrator, so.
All right.
Any additional conversations, commissioners? I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the underfunded elevator grant extension.
Second motion. Commissioner Haskins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes, better counsel, I'm back on track. Nine J, consideration of Mount Maspec Zero Scape Design Agreement, Mr. Garokan.
Before you, commissioners, is Mount Maspec Zero Scape Design Agreement. They would respond as to our RFQ, and we'll be sometime back on the Zero Scape run courthouse, and this is their agreement. I want to be concerned, is your mind, there is.
I know he has, did we get my counsel?
The original asset, the bottom version, I review both, I have no concerns.
Thank you, thank you. And Mr. Garokan, when is this project scheduled to be completed?
The design will start mid-August, the construction will be next spring. But we'll be another contract from the Board here in the next few weeks from Southside Mall, about the construction part of the ADA, of course, because of the Zero Scape project. But they won't start their construction of the plant, you know, till next spring, and then I'm not sure how long that's going to take.
And that includes the drip system and the turnkey project.
Turnkey project.
Thank you, sir.
From the design of Mount Maspec.
Thank you. Commissioners? Questions? I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve a Mount Maspec Zero Scape Design Agreement.
Second. Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
Commissioner Haskins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Nine K, this may be this, uh, discussion of consideration of Justice Center mergers of dryers.
Good morning, Sheriff, how are you?
Morning, Commissioner. I'm sure informed by the maintenance of a couple of our dryers that have been working once, completely not working, and the second one is going out, so we got some quotes drawn up, or formal quotes, but they exceeded the procurement limit for bids, so I was asked to come and discuss the possibility of using these quotes as opposed to going through the form of bid process. Just because we give these fairly quickly, let those machines run usually every day, if we're down with one, and that second one's not functioning properly either.
So, Sheriff, when you sent out your request for quality, or I think, from your perspective, and I didn't know anything, did all the submitters make the specifications before those pieces of equipment?
They did, and I got three different ones. Looked at the capacity, and we didn't really need the higher capacities. One was a sixty gallon, one was a seventy-five, a little more expensive. But in looking at it and discussing it, we, we think we can go with the fifty, it's a little cheaper. And we can get two of them, get those two replaced, and if you have the paperwork, the second page of the information is this Martin Ray Laundry Systems came in at fourteen thousand seven forty-seven, and that windshield demanding installation.
And when are they randomly available?
Yeah, I believe we can get these fairly quickly. Just a matter of the procurement process that we discussed, and we're not about to, to go forward with this.
What is the life expectancy on one of these pieces of equipment?
I'm not too sure, I think these dryers I'm not too sure, I think these dryers have been in the facility for quite some time, I have to check with the maintenance department, but, uh, several years, and then they run constantly, so.
Yeah. So Sheriff and your Financial Director Kobe, I mean, as far as the funding right now, has that been appropriated?
We were looking at the jail agreement fund, and we're getting this checked, and that's what we can use.
Very good. Commissioners, any questions for Sheriff Everett? And, and I think we, we need to understand exactly why he is, uh, in front of the authorities that is, they, uh, they accepted his, rather than going through the regular bid process, uh, they requested these, these proposals, these responses, and these are the, uh, the three that he has submitted to us. If he is able to board to approve this, I would then entertain a motion.
I will move to approve the justice center register of the dryers.
Second motion. Commissioners?
Yes.
Commissioner Sarah?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Thank you, Sheriff, how are you doing? Uh, nine L consideration of letter field.
Commissioner, before you break consideration is, uh, a letter field bid for the fuel to be delivered out to our third house fuel, five plus eight thousand gallons, with the following results, eight car petroleum, two point three three dollars per gallon, extended price eighteen thousand six hundred and forty dollars, oil field, two point two four five six dollars per gallon, extended price seventeen thousand nine sixty four dollars and cents, a hundred valley, two point two three dollars per gallon, extended price seventeen thousand four dollars, also no bid. I ask the board to approve a hundred valley polo companies bid of two point two three dollars per gallon, extended price seventeen thousand eight hundred and forty dollars.
Thank you, Gorkan, any questions, commissioners? No questions, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve the, 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 the field bid be ordered to, uh, a, a polo company at two dollars and twenty three cents a gallon, a total of seventeen thousand eight hundred and forty dollars for eight thousand a gallon.
Second. Commissioner Sarah?
Yes.
Commissioner Haskins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes, thank you.
Nine N consideration of E nine one one request for antenna reimbursement, Mr. Gorkan.
Commissioner, before you break consideration is a reimbursement request that E nine one one submitted to the county for the antenna replacement, part of the antenna is part of the nine one authorities providing, they provide a quote on this, we, the county's money's budget is, it's used in the E nine one transmissions on the dispatch.
Is that, I can actually see him doing the workout on the roof up there, I hope that's right. All right, Sheriff?
I can explain a little further, uh, I said on the nine one one board, we had a meeting last week, the antenna that serves our county's fire departments, it's not functioning properly, it does go on this roof here, uh, the board, uh, chose to just purchase this as because it's an immediate item that we needed for the safety, and that they asked that it be submitted to the county, and in the past, the county has paid for repairs or replacements of the antenna, so that's the intention of the board, that nine one one asked for funding, uh, because it does serve all the fire districts on the VHF system.
And, and that, Mr. Gorkan, would be from all hazards fund, or where, I mean, the amount that.
I would prefer for it to count from, because we have an E nine one one budget.
There you go.
I would rather put court count from that instead of all hazards, if that's okay for you.
Very good. Uh, that's fine, sixteen hundred and sixty two dollars and eighty five cents.
Yeah.
Any questions for Sheriff, uh, Everett? Here in that, I will entertain a motion.
I will move to, uh, to approve E nine one one request for antenna reimbursement.
Second motion. Commissioner Haskins?
Yes.
Commissioner Sarah?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes, thank you.
Nine N consideration of legal license for no application for windows enterprises in EPA window super trading posts, counsel?
Have you read the application?
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioners, any questions for counsel, and or we have, uh, clerk, representatives here? Here are no questions, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve the, the license for your application for regular license, I think you have the super trading positions.
Second. Commissioner Sarah?
Yes.
Commissioner Haskins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Thank you, uh, nine P consideration of unfounded mandates letter to the state, Mr. Gorkan.
Commissioner, before you break consideration is a letter we've been addressing the ethical mandates of the state, having its, uh, due sense of, uh, coverage, uh, James Holden, President of, uh, Georgia, Senator, and June Foskey, Colm House, and Jordan.
Thank you. Uh, commissioners, we have this letter, uh, and counsel, uh, probably a lot of those we, we appreciate that.
It was instructed by, um.
Mr. Gorkan? Well, thank you, sir. I used to chill. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Gorkan, and or regarding this document in front of us?
Yeah, so on, uh, HB twenty one twelve thirty six, uh, Colorado OIT compliance that is, uh, mentioned under the uncompensated cost, is, did you happen to review that, is that correct, that number, or was that part of the template?
It was part of the template. And I did look at, did look at each, for this commissioner, and it can, depending on, like with the movie, depending on our region, et cetera, that they're requiring a movie to be established, it will impact financially those entities, those counties, because we're going to have to understand, is we're going to have to adopt building codes such that, uh, it relates building codes that help prevent wildfires on urban structures, and so that's going to be an additional cost for the counties then to get their staff trained, and for staff to, to make sure, building inspectors go out, make sure that those, the league codes are, you know, here too. The E R T benchmarking, we're already doing in-house, and that does, it, it takes part of my time to get, and staff's time, they're gracious enough to pursue the data that we need to upload from the city of Trinidad, so that's an unfounded mandate, this cost of staff time takes us away from other work that we should be doing, I should say, shouldn't be doing, that we could be doing. The measures to address law enforcement accountability, and that, that's a wide open, yeah, a wide open, uh, potential cost in the Colorado, in the Colorado O I T compliance that had to do with the, uh, have any document that is online from a county or municipality to be, um, FDA accessible, and so that is a greater additional cost on us, even though we're using SIPA of the Colorado State, so I don't care what the acronym stands for, using the state's website or our website, so we have the option. But it all adds up.
Thank you for the clarification. So Commissioner, on the, uh, the question that you asked, on that, uh, the House bill twenty one of twenty six, uh, basically this is the, uh, information concerning modification of certain statutory provisions to reflect the current state of information, technology, environment, and I have not, uh, made any notes, I did however, uh, have a session with Mr. Gorkan tonight to look at all the bills that are listed in here, and that they're all bringing unfounded mandates, uh, to counties, notwithstanding also what is happening to DHS, which is, uh, one of those later on, the DHS would be actually drafting documents of their own to specify what impact of these unfounded mandates are having on counties, that's the conversation that we had with, uh, CDHS and HIBAF last week, and so certainly those are going to be addressed from that perspective, not, not even, yeah, that's going to be a separate, uh, letter that's going to be going out to the general.
And Commissioner, if I may add too, that, um, this is not a particular assistance, this is a, this that was developed to try and get bipartisan support for trying to fund unfounded mandates, see the state's unfounded mandates, or even as optional, just to have them out there, of course, but no, this, this is not particularly the unfounded mandates, or screening order.
Okay. And, and the other questions, commissioners?
I don't, I don't have any questions.
Thank you, I will entertain a motion.
I would move to approve the unfounded mandates letter to the state.
I'll second that. Commissioner Sarah?
Yes.
Commissioner Haskins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Going to go to section ten, financial matters, consideration of payable bills for the second half of July two thousand twenty five, Financial Director Kobe.
Payable as of July thirty first, twenty twenty five, it's two hundred and fifty thousand eight hundred and ten dollars and sixty cents. Do you have any questions, I'm here. Uh, pay force is paid on July twenty third, twenty twenty five, um, it's one hundred and ninety six thousand five eleven seventy two cents, um, I just want to bring your attention where we did ESPI, the twenty thousand four forty five fifty four, has paid for by a grant, but I think we're holding the check.
I'm sure it's, I understand.
Yeah, it's being held, and that is paid for through part of the grant, we do have additional money on that grant. Um, I didn't see anything else, unless you want to bring it to my attention.
Commissioners, any questions on bills? Here in that, I will entertain a motion.
I will, I will move to approve payable bills for the second half of July two thousand twenty five.
Second motion. Commissioner Haskins?
Yes.
Commissioner Sarah?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Going to go to section eleven, executive session, the board, meeting under C R S twenty four six four two four A, have for purposes of, uh, receiving legal advice and purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, sell of any books made personal or other property interest, uh, IFA, moving donations, and we're going to move to C R S twenty four six four two four B in front of the county attorney, for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions, budget, pavilion, settlement, and E N, and we're going to move also nine B consideration of twenty five F zero four two life stability, electrical upgrade, change order number one to this list, so at this time, I will entertain a motion to suspend this, for the county commissioners meeting, and enter into executive session, with as small as a, a. Second. Commissioner Sarah?
Yes.
Commissioner Haskins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes, thank you.